We're ready in here, ready for him. And we're on. Good evening. Good evening, welcome to the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum for candidates running for City of Sebastian Council. I'm Beth Mitchell, I'm the President of the Chamber and I'm representing the Board of Directors. Before we get started, if you would all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one united empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome all of our participants tonight and particularly thank the Sebastian City Council for giving us the opportunity to hold this forum here in council chambers and to televise it on Channel 25. We'd also like to thank the candidates, not only for participating in our forum, but also for making the commitment to our community by deciding to run for City Council seat. Now I'd like to introduce each candidate. In alphabetical order, we have five candidates who are seeking one of two positions on City Council for a two-year term. As voters, you will be selecting two of these candidates. The first candidate is Councilmember Jerome Adams. Second candidate is Damian Gilliams. Our third candidate, in alphabetical order, is Ed Hurley. Our fourth candidate is Councilmember Vice Mayor Jim Hill. And our final candidate is Albert Iovino. Did I do that right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, good.
Yes ma'am.
All right, thank you all for being here again. The forum is sponsored by the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce and it's another example of the Chamber's continuing service to our community, providing an opportunity for an exchange of information for the benefit of the voters. We've actually been holding these forums for over eight years now. I'd like to remind the audience and the candidates that the Chamber of Commerce is an autonomous business association founded here in Sebastian in 1958. It is not part of any government, political party, or social service. Our Chamber does not endorse any candidate in any election. The Chamber does advocate for the businesses in our community on issues that may impact free commerce and we work towards successful businesses in a vibrant economy. I'd like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Ms. Teresa Toll. Teresa is the Chamber's past immediate past Chair for the Chamber Board, I'm sorry, that's immediate past Chair for the Chamber Board, and she continues to serve as our Chair for the Legislative Government Affairs Committee. She's the owner of Bay Street Pharmacy, the only independent pharmacy in the Sebastian River area. Also with us tonight is Donna Keys, another member of the Legislative Government Affairs Committee and a former Sebastian business owner, a longtime Chamber member, and she also has represented the Sebastian Property Owners Association. And Donna will be your timekeeper tonight. And this is where I get to turn the microphone over to Ms. Toll and she will carry forward and explain our forum and what we're forward. Thank you again.
Thank you Beth. Good evening candidates. Beth mentioned that one of the goals of the LGA Committee for the Chamber is to present a fair, neutral, and unbiased opportunity for you candidates to respond to issues and topics of concern to the voters in the city of Sebastian. In furtherance of this goal, each of you chose a random number as you came in tonight, so if at this time you'll raise your number so I can make sure I have you in the correct order. All right, those are small. Okay, candidate number one is Damian Gilliams, is that correct?
Oh, you're not.
Number two, Beth has recorded it already, number two is Jerome Adams. Number three is Jim Hill. Number four is Ed Hurley. And then number five is Albert Iovino. Is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
All right, great. So in a moment, I'm going to review the specific rules for the Candidates Forum, and one of those rules will be the amount of time that you have to respond to a topic or to discuss an issue. You've already met Donna Keys, our timekeeper. She will be raising her yellow paddle when you have 30 seconds remaining. Of course, yellow means caution to let you know that you have that short period of time left. And then when she raises the red paddle, like a stoplight, you have to stop because you're out of time. I think most of you are familiar with that process. So now that our sequence has been randomly determined and you've met our timekeeper, let me review the rules and procedures that will be followed in tonight's forum. Pretty standard, there's going to be three separate segments of the forum. The first will be opening statements, and each of you will have two minutes to introduce yourselves. The second segment will be composed of six randomly assigned questions, in which you also have two minutes each to respond. And then the third segment will be your closing statements, and you'll have two minutes for that as well. We encourage you to use your opening or your closing statements to state the reasons why you want to serve the citizens of the city of Sebastian. So the first opening statement will come from candidate number one in a moment and will progress sequentially through candidate number five. After the opening statements, we'll move into the six randomly assigned questions, again starting with one. This time, we're only going to do three questions at a time and then move sequentially through and then we'll circle back around. That should move things along a little bit better and you don't have to sit quite as long waiting for your turn. Your discussion should be civil and directed to the public and not to each other. We would prefer no personal questions or comments directed to another candidate, and I do reserve the right to terminate your maximum two-minute opening statement, closing statement, discussion, or comments about a topic if you become uncivil or unprofessional. If you fail to make all the comments or points that you desired about a particular topic or have a rebuttal to another candidate's position, please save those additional comments or points to the closing statement section of the forum. Lastly, in the final and third segment, you'll have the opportunity to make a closing statement, and we will go in reverse order for that, so candidate number five will go first for closing statements, and then we will conclude with candidate number one. Again, two minutes each, and we do encourage you to use your closing statement to summarize your position, issues of concern, comment or clarify any subject matter on issue raised by another candidate during the prior portion of the Candidates Forum. So please make any notes if you need to, so you can use those in your closing comments. It's also a great time to summarize your qualifications and state why you feel the voters should choose you. Are there any questions about our rules or procedures?
No ma'am.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to start the first segment, and again, we're going to give you two minutes. Are we ready, Ms. Timekeeper? Okay, so we will start with Mr. Gilliams, and you may proceed.
Thank you Teresa. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Beth Mitchell, and Donna. I want to thank the people tonight that came out to take part in this important community event. For those who don't know me, my name's Damian Gilliams. I've lived in the community over 28 years, maybe 30, who's in track. I came as a clamor. My wife's from One Avenue, I have three beautiful kids, two of whom are engineers at the University of Florida. My son, Richard, started at the Charter High School that we do enrollment, so that he's in college next year. So I'll have three kids in college. But I love Sebastian, I give back to my community as much as I can. I'm the past Chairman of the Code Enforcement Board, six years. I've also worked in the Little League for Sebastian, I've also worked in the Indian River County Basketball League, both as coaches. I've been on the Working Waterfront Committee, I've been on the CRA Committee. I constantly give back to my community as much as I can. My concern is the reason why I'm running again, number one, I'm not a quitter. And for those who run for office, if you believe in something, then you should stay with it, and I believe in something, and I'm going to stay with it. I'm not going to let the people there that voted for me in the past, I'm going to continue to run, and eventually, my message will get out and people will connect the dots. The environment equals quality of life, it's that simple. No more 16 units on Quarter Acre, play by the rules. We have rules, you have to follow them. Real estate values, I want to make sure that your home is your biggest investment. When your real estate values go up, when you have good schools, good roads, good drainage, jobs, you can't have businesses in the community, the residential people cannot pay the taxes alone, the businesses have to do that, we need to help them. So, this election time, I'm asking for your vote. I will work hard for you, and I will make you proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mr. Gilliams. Mr. Adams, two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening everyone, thanks to the Chamber for hosting this event. My name is Jerome Adams, I'm currently one of the councilmembers that have been privileged to work for the residents of this great city. I am a nine-year resident of the city, myself, my wife, and myself have lived here for just over nine years. I've always been involved in some form of community service. Back where I moved from originally, I was a police volunteer here. Since I've been here, I've been working with the Parks and Recreation Committee, I was on the Parks and Recreation Committee, I did work for the Sebastian Soccer Association, the MyToMySpace Bowl from the county. So I've always been involved in some form of community work, and I actually enjoy working with the committee and helping the committee. That's what drove me to wanting to serve on the county, what a way to help the citizen and to actually serve on that governing board and help that city to become the best it can be. I've enjoyed my two years on the council, I've met some great people, I've had great conversations, and I think we've done some good work on the council. One in particular is the advancement of the fertilizer ordinance. We've started some good work in trying to fix the problem too difficult, and I would like to have the opportunity to continue and follow through on what the other plans are that are ahead. So that's it really, I'm here for the people. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Adams. Mr. Hill?
Yes, good evening. Let me do that right. Good evening, and thank you very much Teresa for being here tonight, and thank the Chamber, Donna Lee for being here as well, and Beth, it's nice to see you guys this evening. I've had a really tremendous relationship with the Chamber, the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce, for really the last 15 years, from when I originally got elected on the Sebastian City Council back in 2000. And as I look back on the city of Sebastian 15 years ago, things were quite different than they are today in several different areas, and I'll name a couple of them. First of all, our airport is a heck of a lot different today than it was 15 years ago. In fact, when I was originally elected, there were some councilmembers who made the statement that if you think we're going to be able to close one runway and reopen another one and put industrial center out at our airport, then you're dreaming. Well, I did dream that, and that dream paid off, and now we have a great industrial area out in our airport, it's thriving, and we have, we're doing a lot more work out there, getting wonderful entrants out there to encourage economic development, industry, jobs, better paying jobs, and some better tax base for the city of Sebastian. Also, if we look at the riverfront district, the riverfront district was completely different than it is today. Right now, I believe we have several businesses who are thriving along our riverfront. Of course, they're not doing as well as they would all like, but they're doing a heck of a lot better than they were 15 years ago. Many businesses were going out of business, and in that time, many did go out of business. And I think the city of Sebastian, under my leadership, was instrumental in being aggressive and working with the CRA funds, working with the county, and working with the Chamber of Commerce to come up with some boardrooms that better served the businesses, and now we have a bustling business community along our riverfront, I'm very proud of that. Those two things make the city of Sebastian a better place to live, because we have a better tax base, so therefore, our residential areas have benefited greatly with good roads, better drainage, and better services. So very proud of the things that I've done over the last 15 years in the city of Sebastian, and with your help, I would like to continue that. You can go to votethimhill.com and get more information on me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hurley?
Thank you Teresa, thank the Chamber, Donna, and Beth. My name's Ed Hurley. Little background, I was raised in Ryanville, Hampshire, about 50 miles north of Boston, graduated from Boston University. I spent 45-plus years in the broadcast industry and ownership and management, and during the course of that time, I spent four years on the town council in Ryanville, Hampshire, so I'm no stranger to doing this. My wife Jean and I moved here nine years ago, and I looked around for something to do, and I volunteered for the city, started with the airport, wrote their first website, and I moved on into the television facility and rebuilt that, and wrote a couple of other websites, one for retirement and the other for economic development. So I've volunteered for the city for almost eight years, spending a lot of time in various functions and getting to know the staff and the management. I also have served seven years on the Sebastian Budget Committee, the last six I was Chairman. What do I want to get done as a City Councilor? The lagoon. We've talked about it, the time has come to get some things done, I can go into that in more detail later. All aboard Florida is certainly a key issue in this town, the safety, the quiet zones, and trying to frankly get rid of restoration of the city roads, we need to work more on that, they're decaying, we're way behind. And lastly, to work on city communications with the business community, we need to improve that. So I want to bring my seven years on the Budget Committee and my volunteerism to the City Council, just to let you know, I'm not putting up any signs to clutter our swales, and I'm not taking any campaign donations. I ask for your vote, thank you.
Thank you. And candidate five, Mr. Iovino?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, the Chamber for hosting this event. I am a city of Sebastian resident for almost 12 years now, I moved here in 2002, originally from Western New York. I moved here because I was hired by the Indian River County Sheriff's Office in August of 2002. I spent almost 12 years with them, working as a deputy, and then was promoted within, I think, five years, I've actually worked with them to a sergeant position, and I ran the traffic duty for the last three years. So somebody might actually recognize me, any of the parades that the sheriff was ever in or the sheriff's office was ever involved, and usually the guys in motorcycles, I was usually the one in front. So I do have 18-plus years in law enforcement, like I said. Also in that time, I earned 30 commendations in a life-saving work while working for the sheriff's office. I was fortunate to sit there, sit on the County Metropolitan Planning Organization and the MPO Tax Advisory Committee, which is responsible for a lot of the roadway and sidewalk improvements that you see throughout the county and in the city. I also have my RN degree, and currently I'm a per diem nurse at Indian River Medical Center, so somebody may see me there from time to time. I think I bring a different aspect to the council, I think that I have a different knowledge than some of the folks that are sitting up here, as I've been the ones showing up at your doors when you dial 911, and going to crash scenes, and seeing people, you know, sometimes up there worse. I just have a different aspect of what people, I think, are going to need versus some of the other candidates, and like I said, I think I can bring a different view, so I'd like you to vote for me and to vote for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that concludes the opening statements, and we're going to move right into the questions. So I will start with candidate number one, Mr. Damian Gilliams, and you will get three questions, and then we'll move to candidate number two. So are you ready? Your first question, what should the city be doing to reduce the impact of old septic systems on the Indian River Lagoon?
Well, the first thing that we should not do, first thing we should not do is follow the advice that I gave the council two years ago when they were partnering up with the county on Davis Street. The county's in the utility business, they collected over $14 million in impact fees, I brought it to the community's attention back then, that it's their responsibility to design and implement their sewer program. Basically, they're trying to tax us twice. Just recently, we had an increase in taxes by our, ask the council that's seated now, and they tried again, and I came to the last meeting, well not last night I was here, it was two weeks ago, and I brought it to their attention again, and I said, "Look, they have a lot of money there," and they finally took my advice. So the county needs to, first up, they need to start designing the sewer system, let's get it implemented, we don't need, as a community, need to be taxed twice. There are some creative ideas on how to get money for businesses to partner with grant money to hook into the system, to make it easy for them. So with that, working with the county, working with the state with grant money, and also the federal government, at all costs, we must protect the lagoon. That is a multi-billion dollar enterprise, the river, and we thrive a lot of business from it, we can thrive a lot more business with sport fishing, going out the inlet, which we don't utilize. We're working with building a working waterfront to bring in tractor trails and sell fish across the country, and I think that's the wrong way to move in that direction. But the waterfront, the working waterfront is a priority, we need to get everybody hooked up, and I'm looking to help get it done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Your second question, and I don't know that I said, but again, I'll repeat, that it's two minutes each, you did fine with that. What do you feel is the biggest weakness in the current City Council that you hope to change by being elected?
Well, getting things done that involve players in the community businesses, such as, you know, you look at the working waterfront, we have down there a concrete pad, literally, sitting down there 15, 20 years. They talk about investing $5 million of our tax money, it's cleaning up the working waterfront, but they don't have the audacity to knock on that guy's door and say, "Either you build it or you tear it out." Now, everybody knows what the concrete pad is over there by Squid Lips. Now, is that right? They go after other people, after the hurricanes, to tear down your house and rebuild it, or we're going to tear it down for you. But yet, they won't go after the people that give them money in their campaign contributions. So those are the things that I would be attacking. If you have a nice clean waterfront, businesses will come to the community, people will move into the area. Some of the other things that take place is the waivers and the variances that they give their friends, which is going on right now. Staff is misleading with particular code, land development code rules, and, you know, we're talking about, we've got to stop the 16 units on Quarter Acre and making exceptions, wavering landscaping codes, parking codes, this kind of stuff requires somebody who's going to take on, the people who are ruining this community. We have to stop with putting crematories right in the middle of residential neighborhood, they belong in the industrial area by the airport, and the list goes on. I'm ready to tackle these hard things that they're afraid to do, and move Sebastian in the right direction along with the roads and the sewage and the drainage and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. And your final question of the first round is, is there anything that you would like to change in the business district? You might have touched on some already, but...
Well, I was instrumental in getting the roads paved down there. I had two businesses, actually I had three, I have four businesses in the riverfront district. I came to the council four years ago about the presidential streets, potholes. Nobody wants to invest in an area, invest in a business when you've got potholes. They finally got around to getting it done, it's getting done now, but yet, we're going to have tractor trailers moving in that direction to pick up fish and ruin the beautiful roads that were just put in. They complained, the council complained about all these tractor trailers down by Squid Lips in the city parking area, but yet, they're spending $5 million to, it makes no sense, there's no plan, there's no business plan. So, getting back to your question, could you repeat that one more time?
I will, yeah. You're touching on it, what you want to change in the business district.
So I got the roads, we want to do the sewers. You know, they did an economic development plan that they didn't follow up on, they offered tax rebates, but they don't follow up on it, they have not created not one tax rebate, one business company to come into this area. I would train my kids through college to get engineering degrees, when they get out of school, I expect them to make $70,000, $80,000 a year. These are the kind of jobs we need in this community, we need to get, partner up with this state college, which we're given a discount on rent, we need to show, partner with the school system, and if you have educated people, companies will move to the area, and they'll move to the area where you have good schools, and in the end, your real estate values go up. So I would like to try to help create jobs, let's look at the economic development plan that they put in place, let's set some goals, and if we don't meet those goals, let's change the plan, or let's not just say, "Well, we're the first ones to get it done," we beat everybody to the punch, but it's not effective, nothing's working. So with my candidacy, I'm hoping to change that, and that's just a few other things. If you go to DamianLoveSebastian.com, I'm still updating my website, but there's a whole list of things there that you would love to read if you've got a good half hour or 45 minutes, or ask the candidates on TC.com, I've answered a lot of the questions there, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move to candidate number two, Mr. Jerome Adams, and your first question is, do you have any experience in problem solving or consensus building, and can you explain these processes?
Sorry, can you say this?
Sure. Do you have any experience in problem solving or consensus building, and can you explain these processes?
I do have experience in that area, mostly from work, being a supervisor of seven different personalities, and seven different ways of people wanting to do something. You have to be able to gather all the information and put it in a manner that people can understand, sort through what is relevant or what isn't, get to the heart of the matter, and bring it to everyone that way and get the job done.
All right, thank you. Your second question, what do you think is the most significant challenge to the business community in Sebastian, and how can the city help?
Most significant challenge? I think right now, it has to do with the economy, you know the economy is turning around. It has to do with businesses being able to stay afloat, and whatever concessions or whatever assistance the city government can give to businesses, you know, fees being deferred or whatever, just to help them to stay afloat while the economy tries to regain itself. And being open, available to businesses, for them to speak to us and offer the solutions if they have ideas, something that we may not have thought of, for them to bring it to us. We need to work together as a partnership, and in that way, everybody wins. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the third question is, do you think the city land development code should be revised, and if so, why?
We actually spoke about this during our past meetings, and they're actually going to be looking at the various codes that we have and refreshing them, if I can remember the term. There are some codes that may be outdated, they've been on the books for many years, things have changed since they were issued, so they might not be applicable to today's standards. Staff is going to be going through, they have not already started doing some way through the codes, and bringing it back to council for discussion and possible updating or rewriting. So yes, we do need to look at our codes, and staff is doing that, and we will make changes, or council will make changes, as is necessary.
Okay, thank you. All right, candidate number three, Mr. Jim Hill, your first question, how would you use your role as a City Councilmember to create jobs in our area?
Well, thank you Teresa for that question, I think I would continue doing what I've been doing, quite frankly, for the last decade. As I said earlier in my opening statement, you know, we were able to go through the airport master planning process, which really was a very important process for the city of Sebastian, where we were able to close one runway, open an older runway, and we were able to create essentially an industrial area there. Now, we're in the process of building hangars out there and bringing people for manufacturing jobs to our airport, so that's one way. And continuing that process, we'll be doing some beautification out of the airport and continuing the beautification and development of that industrial area at the airport. Next, I would continue working with the business community and listening to our leaders in the business community, like yourself, like Ms. Mitchell, like the Chamber, and working as partners with those... like the Chamber, and working as partners with those local businesses to come up with solutions that will help make them more successful whereby their success creates jobs and more jobs certainly helps the community.
Okay. Question number two, what criteria would you use to evaluate annexations?
Very good, we've had some annexations in the past and quite frankly, we had some very recently on the commercial side. What I would look at when we're going forward with annexations, the first question I would ask, as I always have, is would this annexation and the development that would be created benefit the city of Sebastian? And by that, I mean would it generate a tax base that would essentially help pay for the services that would be required by its development? For instance, we've annexed Sebastian, Merlinian property. Now, the city of Sebastian generates property taxes from those homes, those home sites and we're able to then provide services. Now, one of the notable things about that annexation is it's a private community where they have private roads, pools, stormwater retention. So the services required in that are very low, however, the city does generate some revenues. Also in the commercial end and industrial end, I think that we would look very closely at what we can do to help the homeowner through adjustments in the regulations to allow them to open their business so that we can create and generate more jobs. So there are several different ways I would look at it from both the residential, the industrial and the commercial aspect.
Okay, thank you. And question number three, in business, a financial statement includes revenue and expense information. Please list the different sources of revenue that our city receives.
That's a great question because many people think that when we talk about spending tax dollars, you know, you heard earlier we spent fifteen million dollars cleaning up the Riverfront or something to that effect. Well, it's important that we understand the different revenue sources. Ad valorem taxes, for instance, are the ones that you recognize the most, those are the ones that you pay taxes on the property you live in, those are the property taxes in the city of Sebastian. And we have a budget of about twenty million dollars and an operating budget of about ten million dollars. And in taxes, ad valorem taxes, we generate a little over like maybe two and a half to three million dollars of that. So there are a heck of a lot of other revenue sources that we generate funds in to help pay for. So a small percentage of the actual dollars spent by the municipality or government are actually generated through the property taxes. We have DST dollars, we have local option gas tax dollars. We are able to get dollars because we created a CRA district in our Riverfront where we get dollars back from the county that are taxed and pulled out of our community, the county provides those back to us and they go directly into our community. So there are many different revenue sources and as an important question, and it's important for the folks to know that when we talk about property taxes, we're only generating a small portion of the actual amount of monies that it takes to maintain the community.
Okay, thank you. Alright, candidate number four, Mr. Ed Harlehy. Your first question, please describe the CRA and define its purpose, its funding source and its mission.
Okay, Sebastian's CRA encompasses the waterfront, Long Indian River Drive and part of 512. It's a community redevelopment authority. The idea is to appropriate special funds to redevelop the area. For instance, the working waterfront, which was started now going on four years, that's within the CRA. Some of the funds, the matching funds for the grant that started this working waterfront, came from our CRA. The Presidential Streets work that's going on as we speak and most of you have seen it, you can't help it if you drive down there. And it'll be done soon, a lot of the funds come out of there. Interesting part of the CRA is that we get a substantial amount of money for the CRA back from the county, back from our taxes that we pay to the county, comes back into the CRA every year. We also fund it through the city. So there are various projects that we do within the CRA, from road paving to the working waterfront. We've got another project going on at the working waterfront as we speak. We'll shortly be rebuilding the fish house. Again, CRA money is in there as seed money for the grant that was issued to the city for the fish house. And that's a rough idea of what goes on in the CRA.
Okay, thank you. Your second question, do you have any ideas on how to increase revenue without increasing taxes?
That is a good, difficult question. For many years, eight or nine years I've been listening, we've talked, I've heard people talk at this diocese about trying to increase revenue. We have in certain areas increased some of the revenue, for instance, at the airport, which is an enterprise fund. As we go forward and get more and more jobs out there and more businesses, we increase the revenue to the city. Rent for the hangars, other full streams of revenue that come from the airport. How do we increase other revenue? Things we can't do. We can't increase franchise fees for electric, telephone, so on and so forth. We can't do anything about the gas tax or the sales tax. Those are fixed by other people, so we have limited sources of where we can raise money. Now, one key area where we can continue to get money are grants. And from time to time, you hear about grants, last night at city council meeting, fifty thousand dollar grant for, who else? There's a matching grant, twenty-five thousand matched by the city, twenty-five thousand to beautify Route One. We've had grant money to start beautifying, it's gonna take a long time to beautify 512. That awful scar down through our city is on the side, but grant money is very important. All-Aboard Florida, we're going for a five hundred thousand dollar grant for quiet zones. We're going for other grants for the lagoon, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then your third question is, what issues motivated you to run for this office and what do you plan to accomplish during your term?
Well, there are a number of issues and they're fairly obvious because we've talked about them. The pollution of the lagoon, Sebastian isn't a solvable by itself, but we need to solve problems in our area. We've talked about it and talked about it and the time has come to act on it and we're starting to do that. The Presidential Streets project, by the way, starts helping that process. So we need to go forward on the lagoon, we need to get grant funding to fix the drainage that comes off Route One that flows into the lagoon, that's a five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar project, we've applied for a grant there. All-Aboard Florida, several concerns, the quiet zone and the safety. And this council, the present council, has said, "We'd like All-Aboard Florida to go away." Well, as Councilperson Coy said, "Maybe the only way I'm gonna get it to go away is stand on the tracks." I'm not gonna stand on the tracks with her, but it's gonna be hard to make it go away. What is it really, it's really gonna end up being a freight line in my personal opinion. But that's a project that we need to work on and we are working on, but we've gotta bring it to fruition. City roads, we've got over a million dollars in road resurfacing that needs to be done. And another project that I would very much like to do is city business community communication. There's a noticeable lack of it, we need to improve, we need to build it up and get that communication going in both directions.
Okay, thank you. Alright, candidate number five, Mr. Albert Ayewena. Your first question, please provide a list of priority issues that you think the city should focus on?
It's been brought up several times from this, in this meeting about All-Aboard Florida, the lagoon and taxes. And I'm one hundred and ten percent for those topics. Taxes have always been a key issue in any debate and unfortunately, the citizens are gonna see an eight to almost nine percent increase in their taxes based on the new budget, along with the business owners. I think we need to continue with the All-Aboard Florida as well. I know there's been some money put aside for that. I'd like to see if All-Aboard Florida does go through, which it looks like it's going to, I'd like to see that the All-Aboard Florida pays for any safety upgrades and they pay for any improved of quiet zones. I don't think we need to look for grant funding to pay for quiet zones. It's not making any stops in the city and what I've seen, it's gonna be thirty-one times a day, that doesn't include the seventeen times a day that FECs can actually be drawing it on the tracks as well, I think people forget about that. In addition to those issues, I think we're forgetting about some of the core values of local government and that's the people. And I haven't heard anybody say anything about, "What are we doing for our elderly, what are we doing for our veterans?" I mean, those are the people that founded this country, made it what it is today and no one's even mentioned that. And I'd like to see, in addition to all the other hot topics that are being put out there, I'd like to see us do something to benefit and work with our elderly, Meals on Wheels or any type of program to help them out. The senior center was a great idea and veterans.
Okay, thank you. Your second question, what kind of financial incentives should the city provide to promote creation of new jobs and business expansion?
I think the city's responsibility is that they need to work with local business and bring back the mom and pop businesses, make it user-friendly. And if somebody opens a new business and they can help them out by getting them on their feet, because clearly starting a business nowadays is not the easiest thing to do. Between impact fees and startup fees and franchise fees, it's not, it's not the easiest thing to do. And I think personally, that's one of the things that I enjoy about the city the most. I've eaten at the working waterfront, I've eaten at a couple of local sandwich shops by Optical Views, Otometry. I like that area, I think that's what makes Sebastian great and we need to work with them, not only in a financial sense, but recently I had the privy to looking at the landscape requirements for small business. And we have the highest landscape requirements of anybody in the county. I mean, and I understand about, you know, setting the standard or bar for people to go by, but that's not working with people. Do you know what I mean? The business is our backbone, that's where a lot of our taxes are generated from. And with All-Aboard Florida coming in, it's gonna be a big hammer coming down and they're gonna need our support, all the way one hundred and ten percent.
Okay, thank you. And your third question, what changes would you like to see made to the CRA plan?
I'd like to see it continue with forward progress. I'd like to see some of the projects within it start finishing and coming to completion, like candidate Amy was saying about this big slab of concrete sitting out there. I mean, again, one of the things that attracted me to the city of Sebastian when I first moved here, actually when I was looking at a home. And the first home that I actually looked at in the city of Sebastian was the first house that I looked at in the county and it was the first home that I bought because I drove down Indian River Drive. And I can't tell you how many times I've been down Indian River Drive since then, parade-wise, law enforcement-wise, just going to the water, taking my dad there, you know, that's what, the waterfront and that area is just, it makes the city what it is. And I think that we need to just continue focusing on keeping it cozy and that fishing village character, if you will, I mean, that's what I love about it.